All right, good evening all, welcome to the November 12th, 2024 Businessing of the Board of Education. We are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the five United Nations of America, to the three republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I believe we're all familiar with the emergency exit right behind you and then right over here. We will start with the motion for the order of agenda, please. I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll go to the court's report.
It is resolved that the Board of Education accepts the midst of the following meetings. Business meeting October 8th, 2024. Special Board of Education meeting October 23rd, 2024. Audit Committee October 29th, 2024. And Special Board of Ed meeting October 29th, 2024.
Okay, I need a motion, please.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, public comments, because we'll be recognized who wish to address the board on agenda items only. I think we're okay, so we'll start with our Students of the Month and who's up first? Mr. Meyer, looks like you are.
Thank you, Springer. I'd like to ask one of my third grade teachers to come up and join me, Mrs. Thor. Mrs. Thor and I are proud of our October Student of the Month. We would like to welcome up to the podium Roger Awie Guanga. Roger, come on up. Roger is an exemplary student in the third grade. His positive attitude and sweet personality makes him a student that stands out above the rest. Roger brings a comic energy into the classroom each day, along with a tremendous smile that is simply contagious. We can always count on him to say something uplifting to his teachers and then tell a funny joke that gets the whole classroom laughing. He's a natural leader with his peers. Strong example is that he can be counted on and help encourage those around him. Roger is always kind and a considerate friend, as well as a wonderful and respected student. Roger's favorite subject in school is math, because it helps him become more intelligent. He loves learning about multiplication and is eager to learn division. Roger's favorite special area class is physical education with Mr. Taglia. He enjoys the fun games they play and getting exercise. Roger's favorite playtime activity in the classroom is building with Lincoln Logs and magnetic tiles. He makes great buildings and houses. His favorite picture book in class this year is Pig the Pug. Roger will even visit the public library to borrow more from the series and bring them to school to read to his friends. Outside of school, Roger's favorite sports are swimming and soccer. When asked if he likes Messi or Ronaldo, absolutely Messi and Team Argentina. At home, Roger is a big brother to younger brother Johan and a new baby sister Emma. He is very caring and conscientious of his siblings. Sometimes during the school day, he will stop in Miss X first classroom to visit Johan and make sure he's doing all right. After school, he likes playing with Johan and Emma and then helps his mom cook dinner. When asked whom he most admires in his life, he said his mom and dad, because they will both work very hard for their family and buy each of the children all of their food and clothing. It's evident in Roger's good manners and kind-hearted demeanor that his parents love him and are invested in raising a great kid. When he grows up, Roger would like to be an attorney, because he always wants to help other people. Roger is a pleasure to have at Hampton Bay Elementary School. We adore the positivity and laughter he adds to school every day. We're truly so proud of him and the student he is. Roger, your future is bright. We look forward to hearing about your success going forward. Congratulations on being nominated for this award. You truly deserve recognition. Congratulations, Roger.
Congratulations, Roger.
Buddy, good job.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Mr. Shook, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. Allow me to introduce Hampton Bay's Middle School Student of the Month for October, Anthony Perez Gonzalez. Just a programming note, welcome also to Anthony's family. We'll be using Timekettle, which is a device where I can speak English and Anthony's mom will hear Spanish. So it's a pretty great use of technology for us. So if I speak a little bit slower, that's why. It's just catching up. Anthony, a seventh grader, represents Team Triumph. And he does it well. The definition of Anthony's team, Triumph, is a team that overcomes obstacles or difficulties. Nothing stands in their way. His teachers had this to say about why he was selected. Come on up here. We selected Anthony as Hampton Bay's Middle School Student of the Month because of his perseverance and academic dedication. Despite challenges, he consistently demonstrates resilience and a strong work ethic that is difficult to match. He meets class expectation and goes above and beyond all his academic endeavors. His determination to succeed, positive attitude, and willingness to help others makes him a worthy recipient of this award. Anthony is widely known as a kind and caring friend, a responsible older brother, a student eager to participate in class and happy to work hard and learn. Anthony's favorite subject is technology, because he can use tools to build things. He shares how he enjoys constructing a tic-tac-toe board in the wood shop. Beyond the regular day, Anthony enjoys playing soccer with his friends. Outside of school, Anthony plays as much soccer as possible, hoping to someday compete as a member of his favorite soccer team, Cruz Azul, in the Mexican Soccer League. At home, he enjoys time with his family. Anthony enjoys reading a good mystery, and his advice to new or younger middle school students, this: Focus on studying, doing homework, and learning. It'll be worth it, because someday it will help you to get a good job as an adult. Congratulations, Anthony. We're proud of your commitment to learning at Hampton Bay's Middle School and look forward to a strong school year ahead.
Mr. Rashard.
Good evening, Mr. Springer. How are you?
I am well.
Please join me in welcoming the high school student of the month for the month of October, Senior Mackenzie David. Mackenzie, come on up. So Mackenzie is a pretty great kid. All of her teachers would tell her that she's hardworking and inquisitive and that she's really creative. And I got to experience some of Mackenzie's creativity firsthand when she came to me with a request for some help with her college applications. And Mackenzie was the first student in my 29-year history of working in high schools to write a Common App college essay on potatoes. And I didn't think it could be done, but it turns out that we were able to test humor and metaphors and every literary device Mr. Farrar would be really proud into a really concise essay about who she is as a creative person by talking about potatoes. It was really brilliant. So Mackenzie's taking her love of potatoes, hopefully to one of many different schools, possibly New Haven, Liberty, UC Boulder, Maryland, USF. There's quite a list, okay? So she could be literally into any state in any direction. We don't know which one quite yet, but we do know right now that she's got a significant interest in majoring in criminal justice. Mackenzie is a very talented athlete and a member of our varsity volleyball team that went on quite a run this year, but she is also a defender lacrosse and hopes to pick that up in college as well. She owes stranger to the theater and being onstage here at Hampton Bay's High School. She's the senior editor of yearbook. She's in TRIAM. She's on Interact. She's done things like home construction with Habitat Kennedy. She is literally doing it all, and I could not be more proud. I asked her for, you know, what advice she would offer an incoming freshman. She said, "Do as much as you can, because it goes by pretty fast." And she's living proof of that. She's doing it all and it's happening pretty quick. So Mackenzie, congratulations. You're doing an amazing job. You make us all so proud.
Okay, we're going to move on to National Honor Society with Ms. Dorian. Here she is.
Good evening. Thank you to the board for welcoming us to this meeting so that we could recognize some fantastic seniors. Tonight, we formally recognize five students who have earned their position to be inducted as new members of our NHS chapter. According to the selection procedures outlined in the Honor Society handbook, the voting members of the faculty council select students who demonstrate outstanding performance in all four criteria of scholarship, leadership, service, and character. These students are to be commended for their heart in the HB community. On behalf of the faculty here at Hampton Bay's High School, I proudly present these elite prestigious representatives from our Hampton Bay schools. It is at this time proclaimed that membership in the Hampton Bay's chapter of the National Honor Society has been earned by these candidates through the demonstration of the four qualities that serve as standards for the society. We will now begin with the official induction of all new members. I'll invite the students up, as I call your name, to receive your token of membership from Mr. Rashard, your certificate, and you could also sign the official chapter register, which is right by Mr. Luce. Yeah, so you'll come up here, you'll get your certificate, parents, you can take pictures, you can sign the chapter, and then we can start. You can line up here. The first person calls. Job Emanuel Almaraz. These past few years, Job's resume boasts Presidential Honors, Science Student of the Month, and NSLC Summer Leadership Program. Job admires his grandfather for his leadership. Next up, Justin Barretto. As an AP Scholar, junior and senior years, Justin is proud of his 96 GBA and participation in FBLA. Justin would like to recognize his father as his role model. Denise Chiriboga. Denise's accomplishments include being head counselor and student of the month, all while maintaining a 90 and above in her ninth through 12th grades. Her role model is her dad. Christopher Roldan. Christopher is a proud member of TRIAM Music and Science National Societies. As an actor in the Spion Society, Christopher looks up to artist Matt Glee as a role model. And finally, Cole Wilson. Playing varsity baseball the past four years and participating in student council, Cole is also skilled in his advanced math classes. Cole credits his father as to why he is the young man he is today. Thank you so much again. We're not done. We have to take the pledge.
Okay, congratulations. All right, at this time, will the new inductees, please raise your right hand and read the pledge. I pledge to uphold the high purposes of the National Honor Society, to which I have been selected. I will be true to the principles for which it stands and will maintain and encourage the high standards of scholarship, leadership, service, and character. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. You're welcome.
All right, moving on, we will... Mrs. Barnes. There she is. Hiding back there. Didn't see you hiding back there.
Good evening. Thank you to the Board of Ed and Superintendent Clemenson for having us here tonight at this time. I'd like to invite the I Try girls who participated last year to stand up behind me, if you don't mind coming on up. All right, the Hampton Bay's Middle School had 13 girls participate in the I Try program this past year. I Try is a six-month program. The 23, 24 coaches were Alyssa Shannon and Ingrid... I'm sorry, Reagan Ingram, who is here tonight. Thank you. Every Thursday, the girls meet at Hampton Bay's Middle School for empowerment sessions, and on Saturdays, they meet at the Riverhead Suffolk Community College campus for training sessions. During these sessions, some of the things that the girls do is participate in tools such as mindfulness, meditation, affirmations, and visualizations. They develop an increase in self-confidence and self-esteem. They participate in yoga, zumba, spin, and self-defense, and they attend nutrition workshops, as well as receive specific triathlon training and one science of triathlon integrated curriculum. The girls bravely participated in the Hampton's Youth Triathlon over the summer on July 14th at Long Beach in Sag Harbor. For the Hampton's Youth Triathlon, the girls had to complete the following: a 300-yard swim, a six-mile bike, and a 1.5-mile run. Everyone who participated in this race pleaded it successfully, so congratulations, ladies. The following participants are... Girls, when you hear your name, just step forward. Daniela Perez. Hayden Wilson. Ivy Alfaro. Demli Mihah. Jocelyn Hernandez. Maeve Kelly. Manuela Ribiero. Maya Olino. Samantha Alvarado. Sienna Bruno. Sofia Minostro Rohano. Victoria Powers. And Zoe Dana. Looking into the future, I had the pleasure of meeting with the I Try coaches today. We are looking forward to expanding our I Try program with a new set of sixth-grade girls who the seventh-grade girls will help rush in. We look forward to expanding our program at Hampton Bay's, and we congratulate you, girls, on your success this year.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Self-defense.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
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 Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, a lot of congratulations again to all involved. We will take a quick break here. If you'd like to go take some pictures and then maybe come back for the fun stuff, but that's... (laughter) Enrollment stands at 1999, Hardy Lake's 1999. K through 12, uh, with, uh, that excludes pre-K. Uh, hey, wait, let me go back. All the way to the beginning, I didn't have a clicker, so, look there, the SS Bayman, um, was debuted last week, right out back here, um, at Hampton Bays High School, our pre-K playground, which, uh, was funded almost 50% by Assemblyman Field, New York State Assembly. Uh, he advocated for us to get a community resiliency grant in the, um, amount of $125,000. So, that paid for almost half of the playground, and, um, five out of five pre-K kids when surveyed, love it. And, um, and I have a pre-pre-Ker, my own Yeah. Hogan, who loves it as well. Um, down the road, at the Ponquod Campus, we have the Elementary School Playground, which is currently closed, but underway every single day for an extension project there as well. There were components of the Elementary School Playground that, um, that, um, weren't really used anymore. Likely, they were fifth and sixth grade elements when, uh, the elementary school served K to six, and so they were a little bit higher, a higher element, and, um, so we've removed them, and, and there's some more age-appropriate, um, equipment, and the footprint of the actual playground is expanding to where there was a fence, um, and then a grass strip, that now the, the whole playground will just go right to the fence. So, hoping in the next couple of weeks, the way the weather's been, except today, uh, we were hoping to maybe get on that playground, uh, just before Thanksgiving, probably after, um, to make sure that it's done carefully and then corrected. Um, okay, so enrollment stands right at 1999. When you look at the 12th grade, 11th, 10th, 9th, it looks very different than K1, 2, and 3. Um, so, while last year I might have called it a ski slope, coming down over the years, in reality, when we talk about the adjusted enrollment, it is a ski slope. If every kindergartner showed up here and not one ever left, and not one more ever came, that's not an adjusted enrollment, and it's gonna start to go down like that. When you look at how many kids transfer in and how many kids transfer out throughout the year, it gives you a little bit more intimate of a story. It's like a helium balloon coming down slowly. Last year, we had roughly 227 new entrants throughout the year after the school year began, and with 174 withdrawals. Wow. So, it is a, and that 174 was not necessarily of the 227. Yeah. But, it is a component of in and out, and so, that difference is still smaller than the difference between the graduating class and the incoming kindergarten class, hence a net decrease. But, when we talk in the community about enrollment and what's happening, you talk to 10 people in the community, five say, "We're overcrowded and we're growing," five say, "We're under capacity and we're decreasing." There's a lot more nuance to that, and some of those debates in the community, I really try to get the next sentence said, everything I just said, that it's more nuanced than that, when you're talking about, um, homes, when you're talking about access to rental property, when you're talking about multifamily units, and when you're talking about the transience of in and out throughout the school year, it's not an exact science, it's a snapshot whenever you do it, and it could change again. So, I always start with the enrollment, as you know. Um, at a special meeting on October 29th, uh, the Board approved bids for capital work. Uh, that capital work includes window replacements at the elementary and middle school, um, the middle school opaque gymnasium windows, um, and then toilet rooms in the original parts of the, uh, in the 1960, the 1957 wings of Hampton Bays Elementary School. That's, we'll take this over the summer. Windows can take place, um, after the winter, uh, in the second shift work. Uh, we had a fantastic Veterans Flag Ceremony on Friday, where we honored all veterans, specifically Bruce Dosher. Yesterday, um, Sumaya Beduchi, an 11th grader, and I attended the Veteran, the American Legion Ceremony, but she was invited to sing the National Anthem, so, she did a remarkable job. The Boy Scouts were there to present the colors as well, and, um, it was a nice opportunity to debut the, um, James Papandrea American Legion atrium, that new construct out there, named after Jimmy Papandrea, who was one of our very first flag ceremony recipients in 2011. A great supporter of the school, and in his, and his wife's, um, memory, their family, uh, dedicates a scholarship every year at our awards ceremony. So, um, small-town community at, at work. Uh, we have parent-teacher conferences upcoming, they're underway already at the elementary school. High school is next week, and middle school is right before Thanksgiving. Tonight, Larry will talk about the budget, uh, calendar adoption. Um, we're all ready to next year, so 24, 25 is over. Just, I wanna flag two field use sharing partnerships that we have. Last Sunday, not two days ago, but the previous Sunday, Pearson Field Hockey, uh, used our field in the afternoon. Um, they have a, a strong field hockey program, they make it to the postseason every year, and there comes a point in the postseason where they play field hockey on a turf field, which they don't have. And so, just giving them that, that little, um, exposure to it. Um, we do that every year for them, and then this weekend, West Hampton Beach PAL Tackle Football, which does have some Hampton Bays kids on it, um, will be using, um, our field because they've torn their bleachers down there doing a renovation project on their campus. So, Johnny has worked with, uh, both groups for the appropriate applications, insurances, but it is a nice little, you know, in the spirit of regionalization, when we're talking about how schools are working together, it's, it's sharing facilities like this. I shared with you the pre-K playground. Um, and then, um, in your, in your packets tonight, members, you have, um, a classroom policy, um, our first formalized attempt at artificial, integrating artificial intelligence into the, um, into the classroom. Essentially, um, it boils down to these ten points, and you can see in the policy, and it is linked on our board docs on our website as well, um, that for it to be accessible in the classroom as a tool, the teacher has to approve it to use. Responsible use includes, um, having it be original work, attributing when you use it, not using it to replace your work, but to assist in enhancing. Students who violate, um, the use of, uh, artificial intelligence, um, are held to the academic honor code inside the Code of Conduct. So, along the lines of cheating, along the lines of plagiarism, uh, is where it would fall if there's not prior teacher approval, or if there's a worry that the work is not original, the teacher has the opportunity to sit down and say, "Lars, tell me about what you just wrote." If Lars didn't write it, Lars isn't gonna be able to talk about it, right? So, uh, we'll, we'll have that ability as well. So, I wanna thank Mr. Carlson for navigating this conversation originally at the Board Work Group, um, beginning last year, and then with our administrative team, and then also the department coordinators throughout the district. So, uh, we'll start to roll that out, we've got two teachers who are really taking the reins, uh, with AI professional development. Ms. Reska, high school English teacher, and Mr. Singh, middle school social studies teacher. Um, and so, um, we are, we are going to the waves. Artificial intelligence is not gonna go away, and there's not, um, we do not have the ability to say, "We're just not gonna address it." So, this is a, a real strong first attempt, um, at formalizing the structure inside the classroom. We'll continue to monitor as we, uh, go through the year, and if there's amendments to Board policy that we feel need, we need to make, we'll make those recommendations this summer.
Great.
So, any questions I can answer for you all?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving. Oh. All right. Mr. Luce?
Thanks, Mr. Springer. A couple of things tonight. First, our annual audit is finished, uh, it's Board-approved, and it was filed with the state as of November 1st, which is, I think, the first time that's happened in about five years, so, thank you, that was, that was great getting that monkey done. We corrected all the minor issues of previous audit, there was about five of them. Our only remaining audit point was the, um, money that we're holding to pay off those, uh, 2012 bonds, uh, that'll happen in June of 2027. Technically, there is no place reserved for that, state doesn't have a place to put it. So, we're carrying it in our fund balance, it then puts us over the fund balance cap, but we also have an explanation as to why we're doing it and what it's for, and we've been doing it for the last couple of years. Our corrective action plan, which explains why we're over our fund balance, is on the agenda for approval tonight, um, and I, you know, hope that that gets approved, and we'll get that up to the state. Uh, Lars mentioned our capital projects, the pre-K playground is a hit, uh, the kids really seem to love it. The, uh, elementary school playground enhancements are in progress. Um, American Recreation Products has been at the site for the past week or so, and things are moving along well. Uh, one issue that has been discovered is that the wood fiber mulch, uh, uh, which is the, basically the cushion underneath all the, uh, playground apparatus, i- it's decomposed a bit, it's packed down too firm, it's really not being the cushion it's supposed to be. Um, and that was not discovered until they started to remove things. That really, it's 144 cubic yards of mulch that needs to be removed and replaced. So, they put in a, a suggestion of a change order, $20,805. We planned a budget of $400,000 for this project. Currently, we have spent or committed only $307,823. Seeing as this is a, a safety issue, we, we recommend that the Board approve the change order and move forward to replacing of the, the mulch or the, the cushion. Um, we also would like to, uh, contract for a curb cut along the high school west side entrance of the driveway. The curb cut would allow us to put cars on the grass outside of District Office, not something we would do every day, by any means, but it would allow us some overflow parking on days like graduation, uh, when we had the college fair, when we had the Northwell Health Careers Fair. We, we just end up with so many cars, we can't fit them all. And we've come up with creative ways to deal with the problem, including parking off-site and busing people here, but even with that, it, it's just, it reaches a point where we just need a few more places to put some cars. Probably, we could put 20 to 30 cars along the grass back there, and again, it would be on, you know, when we have an event or something unusual happens, that we just need the space. It would not be an everyday
Like when 50 college reps come for the college fair?
Yeah.
For example?
Exactly.
It would be locked up.
Uh, it will not be parked up, we're just gonna leave it as, you know, the best surface that it is, um, it'll limit our use to it somewhat, because obviously, on a really rainy day, you better not park on the grass, but, uh, but it will give us the option to say to people, "Okay, instead of parking where you normally do, go around and you're gonna park over there today, that morning because of something going on here."
And as luck would have it, Mr. Morgan has a cousin parking column when he dresses up in the yellow jacket in the morning at the same. He can get cars tightly parked immediately.
So, we're, we're looking to get an estimate for that, but we have about $25,000 left from the bond projects of 2012 that we could use to do that work, once we get the estimate. We haven't gotten the estimate.
Does that need to, um, curb cut need to be approved upstate or not?
Oh, it's, it's a curb cut on our own property.
Right.
So, it, it, it doesn't affect the street or the town or anyone other than, than us. So, we don't need
So, they need to just
No special approval for it.
It goes to the sidewalk.
Yeah.
You have the, have the ramps.
Right. Exactly, it would just be, uh, on the drive, as you're driving in, instead of it being all curbed and sidewalk, there'd be a cut in it and, and sidewalk, of course, but it would have to be pitched and so on, probably. And then, last but not least, uh, it's the most wonderful time of the year, and I'm not talking about Christmas, it's budget season once again, and our budget calendar is out, we have begun to gather the information needed for the 2025, 2026 school year. It'll be my 19th budget that I will be preparing?
20th. I think 20th.
20th?
Really?
Wow. Yes, things, things have moved on very quickly.
Yes.
And so, we'll, we'll be working on that and hoping to bring you lots of information in the next couple of months as we get the budget going.
Quick question, the change order for the rubber mulch. So, we're at 307 plus, then we'll be plus the $20,400 or whatever it is?
Right.
Okay.
It, it will still be under, will still be $70,000 under
Right, I just wasn't sure if 307 included the mulch or not.
No, not yet.
Okay, so, that's where we are.
Oh, question on the parking. Do you have to cut any trees down?
We, we have taken trees down in that area only when they have either been a hazard or have shown to be clearly diseased.
Yeah.
Um, we're not planning to take down trees just for parking, but if we, again, see a situation where a tree is, is dead or, or hazard, it'll be taken down, probably not immediately replaced, or if we do replace it, it'll be in a better location than where it currently is.
I suppose the majority of those are pines in there anyway, aren't they? With the beetles?
A lot of them are pine, and, and a lot of them started to get the beetle in them, and so, they, like, every year, we've taken down one or two because it, it dies, and then it becomes a hazard to live up.
I don't wanna fall on District Office too.
No. No, it's cargo.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
All right, if we don't have any more questions, then we need a consent agenda from four A to four F. I need a motion. I need a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Any questions on student services? Otherwise, we need a motion.
Motion.
Need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Personnel consent agenda from six A to six J. We will need a motion.
Motion.
We will need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Board of Ed is seven A to seven B. Need a motion?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Public comment, persons may address the Board of Education on any matters of interest or concern. The board president will recognize all speakers. Please identify yourself, your town, and the topic of which you will speak. Time limits may be imposed based upon agenda needs. Okay? All right. With that, I need a motion to adjourn meeting.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for a very nice evening of presentations. And see you in a couple of weeks. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.